Go out and ask people to do some funding. We were doing this with the city center already.
We need to know what we're putting in the town before somebody puts it in the.
That's why I'm just saying, let's do the preliminary engineering study for the whole strip. We can decide what to do after we get.
So continue on, wait a minute, yeah, continue on. We've got Middlefield, border quarter, Fair Oaks to Atherton Avenue to Alameda and Selby Lane.
From El Camino to Selby Lane.
To Selby Lane and then Selby Lane connectivity through Elena to Valparaiso. Well, I think that, I mean, if we could achieve that, oh my goodness.
We could do that. Yeah, that's four different.
Well, that's a lot of study, you know, but that's something to kind of, it connects everywhere because then you get on the Valparaiso. You come all the way back over. We can even do the little strip of Glenwood to Middlefield.
No, wait, let me put that on the list. We can put that on the list.
It's a blue dash.
It's a blue dash because it was a pedestrian, because there are already bike lanes.
The Valparaiso connectivity, Glenwood to Middlefield.
Most guys ride down that street, but I did point out that there are bike lanes on Oak Grove as well as, and there's a light on Oak Grove as well as on Ensl. Which is why they said, okay, the bikes would go this way to where the schools are as opposed to come up here and then have to cross with no light and then drive down to either one of the schools, which is why I also said make it a pedestrian area, which doesn't have a stop sign.
So I see it, but I also see a lot of money. So not that I'm a planner, but being a planner, that's a lot of money and there are a lot of other projects. So we're talking about a time frame and I know we have right now rough $4 million of additional funds, but we also have other needs. So it's great to say we can accomplish all this in such a short duration and do all this studying, but that's a lot of money. And where are we going to stop or say to somebody else that we're not going to do a drainage project or we're not, I mean.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, could we get an estimate for those projects before we just say it's a lot of money?
First of all, first of all, the studies are going to be pretty minimal. And in fact, any street that is class three requires no study. Because class three doesn't, basically by definition means is the bikeway sharing the existing roadway with the car. So all you're doing is basically putting up signs and putting on the stencil with the shero on the road. So it requires no study. On, for class twos, those require study, but again, they're pretty minimal. The reason is, for class two, all you want to look at initially is the width of the existing pavement. Because class two by definition means that you have a defined space for the car and a defined space for the bike. So you just need to make sure that the existing pavement width can accommodate both. And so really it's going out and measuring the width of the existing roadway and identifying areas where the existing width will not accommodate. Two lanes of traffic cars and two lanes of bikes. Those are the areas that in order to do a class two, you would have to widen, you would have some.
And so they would identify the areas where you might have to widen the road.
But at that point, there's no real engineering involved. It's literally going out with a tape measure and measuring the width of the road. Because again, all you're trying, all you're trying to make sure of is you have enough roadway width to accommodate the two lanes of traffic and the two bike lanes. Because again, by class two, we want to make sure that they meet the minimum width. We don't want to, you know, just, we don't want to have something that's substandard.
So pardon me just a second.
You still have a tape measure?
So are we.
I've got a big tape measure in my car.
So if we're talking about four projects, the fourth project is clearly class three. This is the cut room from Selby to Valparaiso. Of the other three projects, Middlefield is a class two. Selby Lane is a class two, I assume.
Fair Oaks may be class, Fair Oaks may not be a class two.
Yeah, so is Fair Oaks and Atherton Avenue possibly a class one?
It's not.
Yeah. I mean, no.
No. Initially, right now, class three for Atherton and then eventually, and then depending on some widening, class two.
Yeah.
Fair Oaks would probably be a class two. That's going to require some, you know, at least some, at least a tape measure, you know, because there's some trees in there and there may be some grades.
And there's some signs there along some of the roads. We'll write off the.
I don't know. I think that if we're looking at Middlefield, Fair Oaks and Atherton Avenue and Selby Lane, I think all three of those are class two. I mean, I think, I don't, I don't, I don't see them being, I don't see any of that being class three.
I think eventually, certainly, yeah, the consultant is suggesting that large portions of Atherton could initially be class three. But if you, you know, certainly if the council says you want to look at them going toward class two, that's relatively easy.
Class two is a lot better than.
I think it should just last zero.
Yeah.
So where, I'm sorry, I missed, where does Watkins now fall in?
It's way.
Is it?
It's number five.
Okay.
It's now number five.
All right, so that's, so what I have is Middlefield is one, the Atherton, Fair Oaks, kind of end to end is two. Three is Selby Lane and are we talking Selby Lane kind of north-south? Because the other section, the east, the west Selby is part of the number four, Elena.
Right, and north-south.
So from El Camino to Selby.
Right, okay.
East-west.
East-west.
Well, I was getting confused, right? Because that's why ECRD to.
East-west to Selby.
To the school.
To west Selby, to school, okay.
Well, you're still putting in the, covering up the dirt with asphalt going to the safe routes to school through the park.
That's outside.
I would say.
We're not even.
But just so we don't miss it, I'll put, I'll put Park Ave. And then four is the Elena-Austin-Berry connection from Selby to Valparaiso.
Yeah.
Right.
That's probably where all the classes.
And by the way, of course, as the council is aware, you will see the RFP before it goes out, so.
We'll be able to comment.
So I know we've got to move on to the ordinance, but just one comment on the Middlefield. In the staff report, under, in this.
Okay, which one?
In this field. It says, on Middlefield Road, it says widen bike lane by improving shoulder conditions, restripe and high visibility green markings at conflict zones and increase signage weight on it. I want to comment on the high visibility green markings at conflict zones. I think this study should look at high visibility green markings from end to end.
Well, I think we should look at all because.
Well, that's fine, but I just want to just know what it costs to do. Whatever the conflict zones are is probably intersections. I want to know what it costs to do the plastic paint green marking for both lanes on both sites from end to end.
We can do that. By the way, I think there may even be, there may even be a small section of Middlefield where they're, you know, where they may suggest class one. But that's the advantage of taking the direction that the council appears to be going now, which is, you know, we'll get the engineering done. That's where they really get out there and they use the tape measure and maybe a level and, you know, and a little bit of judgment and then come back to us and say, here's what we recommend.
I would like to, on the Middlefield, is there anything that we can do today on, at Oak Grove and Middlefield?
You mean like any intersection, like a traffic light?
No, there's traffic light, there is, that's not working. But there are a number of accidents, so maybe we, this is maybe a conflict zone where we can do something like we did at Middlefield and Marsh. Can we do something immediately to try and help that?
We engaged, we engaged Alt with a traffic engineer to look at Marsh and Middlefield, which is.
Marsh and Middlefield?
No, no.
No, no, to look at what.
He's going back to history.
It's history to what you have now seen, the green paint through. That was as a result of the consultant saying to us, that's probably the worst location you have right now. And we agreed, and so we said, please look at it for us. And there was a lot of engineering in that, and I say engineering, it's not grading and drainage. It's them coming out to the nearest, you know, couple of inches and measuring to make sure that it met the standard, as the city manager said, as the manager said. Because to do other than the standard, you're opening yourself up to liability. So they came out and did that and they said, change this, change that, move these center lines, whatever, and we put that in. We could look at the same thing as part of this study for Oak Grove and Middlefield and say, we'd like that to be one of the earlier foci of the study.
And I'm conflicted with the whole study.
Right.
That could be, that should be done, I think it's.
As part of this transportation committee, you know, doing something like that, because honestly, you know, I want you to do that.
Don't give me any ideas.
A lot of people out there painting, be careful.
I think we have enough, we'll, excuse me, but I've got some paint, the tape there's in my car, I've got to keep going.
Make sure it's bright green.
So we'll go ahead and move on to item number two.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We don't have the city attorney here this evening, so I'm just going to go to the manager and some. He doesn't want to hear me say this, but I'm not going to give you any legal advice whatsoever. But the sign ordinance that we currently have is not only inadequate, but it's inviolate of constitutional law in some areas. And we've got some issues out in the community that we've heard from, not only from members of the council, but from the community as well. Those issues dealt with real estate signs, open house signs, construction signs that sometimes get crazy with subcontractor signs going all over the fences. And some free speech, non-commercial signs that end up in the rights of way. And so we looked at our sign ordinance and said, what can we do? City attorney looked at the sign ordinance and said, you can't do anything when you're resisting ordinance. If you touch it, you've got to bring it currently up to what constitutional law allows or requires now. So we met with building and planning, we met with the builders' roundtable, they took a look at it, we passed around some drafts. We talked with contractors about what size signs would work for them. Lisa tossed it out to the Silicon Valley Association of Realtors and got some feedback from them with respect to real estate signs. And then, of course, the city attorney had his hands all over it. So what we attempted to do in order to regulate properly is come up with a sign ordinance that addresses real estate and commercial, or real estate and construction signs, which are two of our main signs in the community. We don't have any commercial signs and things like that. And then, in the same vein, regulate non-commercial speech, free speech signs out there, which are anything from a garage sale sign to a lost dog sign to political signs. So we need to regulate them consistently. We can't single out any particular sign for its content. Can't content, it has to be content neutral. And we have to be somewhat consistent in how we apply the sign ordinance across the board. So I've already met with each council member on this, so there's a number of issues that came up. One is we need to make sure we clarify in the ordinance right-of-way versus private property. We need to make those corrections throughout the ordinance. And there might be some concerns with the size of construction signs or size of Realtor signs, whether it's a square footage, whether it's the height. And we have some standards with respect to how close it can be to an intersection, how close it can be to the paved surface, and how close it can be to a driveway. Some of those things are related to visibility, getting in and out of the driveway, turning around an intersection, getting in and out of a public road. And then others just have to do with just plain, you don't want billboards in town, that's not Atherton. So we want to regulate in those manners. So you have a sign ordinance and you have the building official and your planner here to talk about the planning and building component of things, and I'm happy to address any questions as well.
Perfect. I want to start by thanking the building staff and working, you guys have been working on this for quite some time in the city as well. And I know that you've gotten some very good feedback from contractors and so on and so forth related to construction signs. And I think that that's clearly one of the issues we're trying to tackle, but I also think that construction signs, it's something that we need to know. A lot of these lots or addresses get removed for emergency purposes. You know, we need some form of identification to find out which parcels and who's responsible for that site when we do get calls, because that's again, one of our number one calls. So thank you for all your time and effort on that. Because that's something that clearly we get a lot of calls. As you know, there have been some sites that have gotten to the point where it might as well be 100 feet of road signs. And I will tell you, it's one of my number one calls, where I just see people saying, hey, this is ridiculous. And, you know, we're supposed to be fair, have a fair playing field, people that do construction in town. And I think that their general contractors are very respective, you know, responsible, and they don't want all the subs, all these signs all over the place. It just gets a little crazy when you've got people throwing them over the back fence. That's not what Atherton's about, so I'm glad that this is brought forth to us and as council members, we can, you know, give your input on it. Anybody want to chime in?
When I reviewed it, I gave my.
Excuse me.
So you want to chime in? Do you want to chime in?
Chime. You're just going to be a pastor, chime in?
I don't know, I don't want to, it's like I was going to an event in Stanford today and there was one parking place that I'd waited 20 minutes for and somebody just swept in.
That's not that, that be.
So I have a question, clarification. You have categorized signs into commercial signs, which include construction signs in an active construction project and real estate signs, which might be, you know, a for-sale sign, for example, versus non-commercial signs, which are a variety of signs. And you said in your introduction that they all, that we have to be consistent in the way we treat signs. My first question is, can't we be, distinguish our regulations, both in terms of square footage, maximum square footage for the sign and maximum height of the sign? Can't we distinguish between, you know, let's say, commercial and non-commercial? Start with that.
We should be, okay, I mean, you guys were in the, in new China because I'm going to be looking at you throughout all of it. So, yeah, I mean, as we were talking with the city attorney, some of that, some of those questions came up. And we talked about the nine square feet for real estate and for construction, but we were concerned about the nine square feet for non-commercial.
No, sixteen square.
Sixteen square feet, sorry.
Well, we tried to get to the sixteen square feet was we actually went out and surveyed a lot of signs. The various real estate signs, various construction signs, and tried to come up with a number and a height that would encompass most of what we see out there. So we didn't go out and say, this is going to be the maximum height, the six foot eight, and 50% of the real estate signs are in violation. So we tried to come up with that kind of number. And then the construction signs are actually, we sort of categorize those as temporary signs too, so just during the active construction project as opposed to a regular commercial sign that would be there permanently. So there's a distinction there.
But do you remember what the city attorney said in respect to?
Well, I would think there would need to be some kind of a connection and that's just a reason. Why would the non-commercial signs need to be smaller?
Right.
And I think the city attorney may have concerns unless we have some specific findings we can make in order to justify that. So he wanted to really treat everything.
Yeah, I think that you get to the point where somebody's become permanent and they become billboards because we take away from being assigned for a temporary purpose, then it never goes away. And that probably, that is probably one of the biggest complaints is that these things never go away. It's valid enough that I have to have two years of being next to this construction site, this damn sign reminds me of that contractor I don't like, or I do like, but I don't like it there.
So you're just, let me just clarify what we're all talking about. You're talking about a, the developer puts up his sign, he's developing this property. And then next to his sign along his fence are banners that get hung for the, all the subs, the concrete, you know, the roofer, the painter. And the tier designer thing. I have to tell you, I have a really hard time accepting that. When we moved into Atherton, you know, one of the things, the street signs are obelisks. How quaint, how charming, how wonderful that is. And, you know, we go to Pueblo Beach all the time and all their signage is so, you know, quaint and different. And when we modeled our house, the contractor I had wanted to put a big sign up, all of the subs wanted to be, I said, no, we're not going to do that. Because to me, I didn't want my house to become an advertisement, billboard. So I totally agree with the direction that we're going here to regulate this. We're going to be, you know, on everybody's blacklist about this because that's how they get business. The other thing that then happens is they park their trucks out in front of the construction zone that has all their billboards on their trucks, you know. And it does last, it seemingly forever. But, so what we're proposing is to standardize these signs that still allow them.
Standardize them in one spot, one maximum size. So there are those, you know, three-minute subsides all over the, all over the fencing, they can't be there. They have to be in that.
Private property, then you said that.
Private property.
In this one area and then they can put their logos and their advertisements.
Correct, but we, exactly what we discussed, it was in one sign, the general contractor, they can determine whether the surveyor or the concrete or the other people can add their little logos on there, that's it. And that's what we also discussed in here, prohibited. We're very specific, we don't want the flag polling when we get the sign and they just hang another sign off to the edge and things like that. And then it's, so we did really try to limit it down to that, and that's what's in the ordinance.
And private property with non-commercial signs. Commercial signs on private property, we break it late.
Yes.
I'll get you though.
When we built our house, which is now eight years ago, we were advised of the rules, which at that time, or that we could have one sign. And it was the general contractor's sign. And if there were other members of the design team that wanted to advertise, it was up to the general contractor to allow space on his allotted size of sign to include it. Like any big commercial project that you would see in the city of San Francisco, there's one sign and everybody's listed on it. So I'm trying to understand, is that what we're looking at? But, but in the case where we have private property and it's owned by a developer, is a developer then allowed to have the drywall guy and the concrete guy hang or put on the private property all these commercial signs since it's on private property?
Yeah.
The intent here is that you can place it on the private, on one sign per project. And the current ordinance is a little bit confusing on how many, depending on the size of the property, and then whether each one of those needs to go to the city clerk for another permit. And so there's always been guidance out there for the contractors, but it's not been real clear. It's, we really wanted to try to clarify it and make it.
Essentially, one sign per property.
Now, this does be, Councilwoman Lewis, you did talk about the banners on the vehicles and stuff. Those would not be regulated because they're on the vehicles.
Right, right, yeah, so.
Yeah, so when I look at it, I guess a couple of things stuck out. One was, some signs you want to have time limit on. You know, there are temporary real estate signs and you can be picked up, you know, at the end of the open house on that day, et cetera, et cetera. And I wasn't real clear that there was there, but one of the key things was, we don't allow residents, for the most part, I realize there's certain streets that are high altitude or they're on edge, they can build higher. But we don't allow residents to build anything higher than six feet as far as the wall, but we're going to let a sign go up seven feet. That doesn't make any sense to me. It should be, we should have them at least the same size, a six-foot limitation or smaller, because, you know, somebody doesn't want to have signs sticking over their fence. I mean, if they put a fence up, it's because they don't, you know, they want us trying to shut out the outside world. And we're giving people the right to have a sign seven feet high. So if we're going to go ahead and allow contractors or people who don't even live here the right to go seven feet, then let's change all the ordinance and let people build seven-foot-high fences. Because there are a lot of people that ask for that and go to planning commission all the time and ask for it and they get turned down. So I don't understand why we're going to let contractors and builders and real estate people who don't live here to have a seven-foot-high fence or a seven-foot-high large sign. I really think that that was, you know, I don't care if they have it today, you're giving them a grandfather clause. Six feet should be the limit, more or less.
The ordinance says seven, yeah, a little less. Was there any feedback from the builders and contractors about the height issue?
Not about the height issue. The height issue goes just back to where we went out and we were surveying different signs, especially real estate signs are a little bit higher.
Yeah, but I understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I do, I'm just telling you where we came from during this study and just, we're trying to incorporate what the industry normally uses and allow it to continue forward.
Well, the industry's kind of taking advantage of the whole thing, and so, you know, that's.
The industry is going to put up signs that go to the limit of what we set in the ordinance. If we say seven feet, they're going to be seven feet. If we say sixteen square feet is the maximum, they're going to be sixteen square feet. So I completely agree with what Bill said. I think that if our fence limit by ordinance is six feet, the sign should be limited to six feet. I don't have a, I like the idea of requiring construction signs, and by that I mean signs that are on a piece of property that has an active construction permit and it's solely there for the duration of that permit being active. I like the, I'm okay with sixteen square feet for that. And I like the idea that if everything has to go on that sign, let the subs and the contractor negotiate it. I think that's more square footage than we should allow for non-commercial signs. And by non-commercial signs, we're talking about political signs.
Correct.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah. And candidates. Some people might see those signs around. They are in the town right now. I don't think those should be any more than nine square feet of the maximum. And I hate to have those signs out there anyway, but they're important, so we need, and it's free speech, we need to allow them. I do think that, as I said to the city manager, that with respect to those non-commercial signs, that I, the proposed restriction of not within six feet of the paved road, I think should be three feet here of those signs. Because there's plenty of streets where there's not six feet. I mean, El Camino, there's a lot, Middlefield, there's lots of streets where there aren't six feet. And, and I mean, we don't have any, you have to get the permission of the property owner. I'm okay just to leave that be ethical, leave what I require, which I think all the candidates do. But it's not just the political signs, there's other non-commercial signs that would be affected by that. And I think we can set different square footage limits than we have.
At one time, there was, I thought I, that there was a space limitation on a piece of property, if you had non-commercial signs, they had to be separated by seven feet. I don't know if that was true, but I think I seen something, and I thought we did. And so, you know, you don't want to have like, I realize if somebody has a small lot and they want to support, you know, Hannah Schu and Senator Hill and Rich Gordon and, you know, Karen Conlin and all the others and the three council members, or sometimes five council members, whatever. You know, but the place looks trashy.
Well, there's no limit that we can place on non-commercial signage with respect to what you're talking about. Commercial signage, yes, and that's currently part of the code. There was a 200-foot separation between signs. You were a lot foot one and then.
We can limit the size of non-commercial signs.
We can limit the size of signs.
Yeah.
But I don't know whether they can get them between non-commercial or.
Well, he wants a rationale. If Bill wants a rationale for why construction signs can be sixteen square feet and everything else can be nine square feet is, I think we have a good rationale because there are multiple contractors and subcontractors who.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll rope that with Bill for sure, yeah.
And it's commercially, you know, what do you want to call it, the standards that exist today.
For the non-commercial signs, such as political signs, there has to be a, when I say a season or a duration or a, you know, beginning and end. It's not something that can pop up, you know, arbitrarily if there's not an election time, you know, for this free speech.
Like that lady on. Oh, right, she's still out there.
She's got signs, she's been there for five years.
She's mobile.
Yeah, I would, okay. And then for the Realtor signs, the ordinance needs to just allow Realtor signs, open house signs, for the, put a time limit on it, just like you were saying. But, you know, in the morning to advertise the open house, to the end of the open house, and they have to go away that day and if it's, you know, multiple. But could it. But could it, could we only restrict it for the open houses on Saturday and Sunday? Because there's broker tour on Tuesday, sometimes there's broker tour on Friday, and they're kind of sticking them out all the time. So if we know that it's just kind of going to be the open house for the weekend, is that allowed to do?
Well, the open house signs shall be used only on the day of the open house event.
And only two.
Yes.
Two additional places.
Yeah, but I think Elizabeth's comment was, they have multiple ones during the week, so they'd be out every day.
And it's really for the brokers, the broker tours, and brokers know, they get the information themselves of which, yeah.
So if the homeowner does have an open house on a Wednesday, they can't have an open house sign?
No, just on weekends, only on weekends, I think is the.
Even though it's not a broker tour?
Well, I think that'd be kind of silly to have an open house.
I don't know, I don't know, maybe.
Some people have them all the time, but.
Yeah.
I guess.
I think that might be difficult, and we could certainly, oh, we're going to have the city attorney, sure, put it into the ordinance, write it in that it's weekends only, open house signs, although, you know, they have the sign in front of their house, and if they have an open house, they'll put something on that sign that says, open house, but the ones that are.
On the.
The street, the directional insides, aren't allowed except on Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I think she was.
And it's limited to two, because what's happened is, we have some agents.
Well, I have to tell you, at least there's, we're kind of bracketing it and putting some boundaries on it, because a few years ago, even if you had an open house sign at a corner directionally, the public works person in Asherston took it up solely. I said, I said, personal, and friends.
So I think that also the limitation of, the property has to be in town, if you have an open house sign, it has to be a house in town.
In town.
Believe me, you can't put.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, because, yeah, some of them in Meadow Park, they're having signs from.
On our.
On Middlefield says, open house this way, and the houses of.
Always, right, just get there, find it.
Yeah, the property must be in.
In town, so that means those are easy to take care of.
With respect to the other issue of non-commercial signage limited in duration of posting, I'm, I'm not sure we can do that, only because, you know, you can put up a, a sign in your front yard or the Pope right away, that's non-commercial, free speech, that we can't tell you you can't put up, or you have to take down.
Right. Well, I feel, so I'm sympathetic to that. I would like to have a limitation if we could, sixty days, I think, was what I saw.
Well, sixty days is.
Construction signs.
Right.
And that's.
Right.
And so let me chime in on that, because sixty days is ridiculous. You get a superior occupancy, get your sign out, you've had fifteen days or less, period. Realtors, you sell a house, it doesn't stand for sixty days because you're lazy and don't want to take it down.
No, because you want to get advertised.
Take it down. Sixty days is ridiculous, you get a superior occupancy, sign goes down, fifteen days or less.
I agree.
I mean, that's a life, you want, well, you'd have it, but not forever.
So in terms of the size, I'd say sixteen square feet for construction signs, I think there's a rationale for that, nine square feet for all the other signs. That includes real estate signs and not, and non-commercial signs.
Real estate is commercial.
I know, I'm making, but I make, Bill wanted a rationale, I think there's a rationale for why construction signs can be sixteen feet.
They put the subs up.
Because they put the subs up, and we could say everything else, both commercial and non-commercial, everything but construction is nine square feet.
Well, we have, to add to that rationale, we have required information with respect to the construction signs, that we require them to put up, and that might add to the rationale that they need a little bit.
Also, we're naming the number of construction signs to one, and we're not naming the number of other signs.
Well, for-sale signs, I mean, probably you don't want to see more than one for-sale signs.
On the, on the timetable, and I understand what you're saying, that, you know, it's going to be difficult to put it in, but I think if somebody has a sign up and the neighbors really want it to come down, could we at least have something in there that would allow the co-compliance officer to go over and have a conversation to try and talk them into it, versus not have anything to, to even stand on, you know, we may be shooting ourselves in the foot. Somebody may have something up that's very offensive, the neighbors all want it down, I know that, I understand, but I give them a chance, say, hey, it's been up for three weeks or six weeks, sixty days.
So the material, temporary sign, I mean, the ordinance talks about what a temporary sign is, intended for, not intended for long-term display, and a lot of the free speech signs fall into that category. So if they're made of lightweight flimsy material, ordinary hand tools, put them in, that sort of thing, that's the sixty-day clause for that particular type of sign. But non-commercial signs also are arts and sciences and sports, and, you know, I like the, your team runner. You know, those sorts of signs, if somebody puts something like that up on their private property that says, I like Notre Dame, and it's not a flimsy temporary type material, it's kind of hard.
Well, we can limit the size of that.
Yeah, sure, for sure.
That's why when you have something in, you send the co-compliance guy over and he say, guys, football season's over, they lost.
Well, it's like the house on the other side of the avenue that has the flag and the, on it, and the lights on, on their gate.
On their gate.
Oh, it's art.
It's art.
Yeah, those are areas we don't want to get into, content regulation, we can't even, can't even go there.
So all this doesn't matter if we don't enforce it, so.
Correct.
The reality is, you know, and again, the favor created ordinance is the sign ordinance, that we're not going to enforce it, because the first person's going to say, well, look, I have a sign out saying I'm selling, whatever. It's not necessarily the same, a different sign in that same location, but it's allowed. So again, without the enforcement component, you know, it doesn't matter much. And I've gotten very positive feedback from the contractors relating to it, I think, that if we inform them as they're getting their permit, that, you know, here's your allotted area, it's clearly identified, because now you have a responsibility to police it, because when we go out and you get crap all over your site, we're not going to them, we're going to you, so.